Row call, please.
Sure can. Lloyd Gracheck.
Here.
Laura Greenley Karp.
Here.
Dave Andrin.
Here.
Ben Hanson.
Here.
Ingrid Kohler is absent. Sue Springborn.
Here.
Sarah Zeradka.
Here.
And Cassidy Schwer, our city council liaison, is absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. We shall continue. Adoption of the agenda. Motion.
I make a motion.
Dave Andrin makes a motion second.
I second.
Sarah seconds. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to approve the minutes of February 28th, 2024.
I make a motion.
Dave makes a motion. Second?
I second.
Laura seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting open to the public. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
No.
No. All right. Anybody would like to speak?
You have two people.
Yep. Come on up, John. I'll give you three minutes. You can.
First of all, I just hand this out. This is what caused this need to be here this evening.
Thank you.
We lose your. However, that's held. My right hand still hasn't had the surgery, so bear with me.
Thank you.
Again, this was as a result of a data request that we all can do of government.
Thank you.
And it shows.
John, can I have a copy?
The.
John, Brandy needs a copy, please.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway. John Schmal, 2750 Chisholm Avenue, North St. Paul. What I have handed out to you is a result of a data request I submitted just for, I don't know why I asked for it. And now I say, why did I ask for it? But anyway, for any of the building that has been going on here, I asked for the local whack and sack charges. That's water access and sewer access and park dedication fees for the major construction that we had here in North St. Paul. And you can see it's anchored drive apartments, the anchor townhomes, the Sentinel and the Lily Building. And you can see that there's a missing number. And there's 89 units in the Sentinel. And it's $900 a pop, a unit. And it's blank. They didn't collect it. It was part of the construction agreement that they would pay it, but it was not paid. And I have submitted no less than four additional data requests saying, who authorized it? Where is the authorization? Where is the code or the regulations of the city that says you can waive it? And who waived it? I've received nothing. Just a little song, a little dance, a little seltzer down your pants. Nothing. Absolutely nothing. So I don't know, as a group, if you would be unhappy if you knew that this was done. And what would $80,100 do for parks in North St. Paul? Did anyone here know of this, that it was canceled? Well, maybe you can take it up with your council member and say, why? Because I have failed miserably in trying to find out why and who authorized it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right. Anybody else from the public? All right, let's go to number six, A, Park and Open Space Master Plan.
All right, I can talk to that a little bit. So Dave, Laura and myself have been on a subcommission with Brandy and Sarah to kind of scout out and go through all the proposals that were sent in from.
Sarah, I think that's item B.
Oh, sorry.
But we could do B first.
Is this your plan, is A?
Yes.
As yours?
Yeah.
That's okay. Go ahead, Brandy.
Oh, sorry. Just to make sure that we're all on the same page. So item A is the park citywide policy guide for parks and recreation and open space in the community. So as you can recall from the last meeting that we had, we were going to set up a subcommittee to review the draft. At that point in time, I think we had maybe three of the, I think, came out to be five chapters completed. And we just weren't able to get that subcommittee scheduled to meet. And then in the interim, I had put in my resignation. And so in order to just get something completed, I went behind the scenes and just cranked out what I could to give you a complete document before my departure. So what you have in the packet today is the three additional chapters that weren't in there before. So a summary of our public comments from our survey that was completed over the course of the summer. Some needs analysis, which includes some research from the National Park and Recreation League or Board or Association, I can't remember what the acronym is, as well as some just reminder about equity and physical, other kinds of ADA type system, system changes, as well as a review of all of our existing plans that address park and recreation. So our comp plan, the WSB 2022 Park and Open Space Plan, or the Park Improvement Plan, rather. The bike plan that I don't know was ever actually physically adopted by the city. So I did a compilation of all of those recommendations and that's included in here. And then that last chapter is basically kind of a guide on what you could do moving forward in terms of policies. So I would recommend that perhaps your public works department prepare a maintenance, maintenance plan. And if you're going to do future park improvements that are going to be widespread, like with Howsey Park or with the McKnight Park Plan, what we're going to be talking about under item B, we would need to have a two-step planning process where we would have a conceptual plan prepared by a professional consulting firm that could help with that, doing outreach. And then step two would be the construction, construction document phase. So I'll leave it up to you to dive into any questions or comments about the draft. And if there's any changes that you would like to see, I can try to get that incorporated.
There's a couple little errors.
Okay.
On page 27, it says, the aeration system, it says Silver Lake. I mean, these are picky things. It's not going to change.
Picky things are appreciated because we want it to be right. So page 27 says 20, or says, page 27 says Silver Lake, but it should be, Casey?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then on 36, page 36, it talks about Dorothy Park and Dorothy Avenue. I don't think there is a Dorothy Avenue.
I probably got that information from a history document, so maybe the street names changed, so I can modify that.
Yeah. It's on Lake Boulevard, so, but that could be confusing to somebody. Actually, that's really, I didn't, I didn't understand the Sepulipark thing, but that doesn't matter. It says that's what it used to be. And I never remember that being called on page 44, which doesn't matter anymore because I never heard it but called Central Park either, but now it's being called Central Park.
It's, it's on our mapping system as Central Park.
That's what somebody else told me. Yeah, it's.
And I dug through the files, you know, the physical paper files on all the parks that I could find. And I think Central Park, I'm trying to remember what I read, but it has something to do with the now Veterans Park was.
Well, that was Central Park.
That was Central Park.
That was Central Park. And if you look at the old historical photos, there used to be a pavilion there as big as this room. And that was called Central Park. So I don't know why all of a sudden, North St. Paul Green, we called it the place where the Round Garden is.
And you mean this across the street?
Yeah, where we're calling Central Park now.
Yeah.
So if Central Park is not correct, what, what would we call it?
I don't know.
You could leave it now as Central Park, but back in the days, back when we had the cannon and stuff up here, that was Central Park.
Yeah. I asked Terry, because I heard Terry Frillon call it Central Park. And I said, where'd that come from? And he said.
I'm not sure where it came from either. I think.
I mean, it doesn't matter. I don't object to it, but it's just, people like me are going to say Central Park. You know, they don't know what that is.
Yeah, I agree. And I don't know that it's even going to remain a park in perpetuity since it's part of our development site.
Yeah, it's really small, but that's just across the street from here.
Yeah, yeah. So and then I also, I did not know that Rotary Park belonged to MinDOT. That was my other question, but I've been told that that is correct.
That is correct.
That was just recently.
Oh, is it?
Re-brought up.
Oh.
Okay.
As I was reviewing this document last week, just reading through it again, I noticed that too, that I had written that it is owned by MinDOT. And then I went back to the map to confirm because I had been under the impression, as probably most of you have, that it was a city park because the city maintains it. Any other comments?
Any other questions?
I'll just make those corrections.
Well, I probably should, I hate to even mention this, but, because I don't think it's important. But another citizen had brought this up to me. Colby Hill is not Colby Hills. It was Colby Hill. And a neighbor up there approached me and said, that's not supposed to be Colby Hills. It's Colby Hill. Well, I don't know when, we just put the S on it. And I, I don't think it's important, but that one person, it was to her.
It's been brought to council since then.
Oh, it has?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I would hate to see signs changed and things because of an S.
Yeah, I don't know where those statuses of that time have changed or it will be, but it's been brought to council.
Well, it seems silly to.
All with the same status.
Yeah, okay.
All right, good. But it is a big deal. And you should mention those things.
Yep.
We all are citizens of North St. Paul, so if we hear something, we should mention it.
I'm just cheap and I hate to see money spent to take an S off of something.
I wonder if we can just put like a sticker over it, like a blue square over it.
This citizen has tried to do that.
Yeah. And it was. They did. Oh, okay. Well, it sounds. It's about the same person, Sue.
I think so.
It sounds like maybe it's a problem that's bigger than us and we'll be told what to do when it happens.
Okay.
Well, then maybe, I don't know, in this document, if you want to take that S off, is the question.
I'm not sure if it's, I'm not 100% sure that it is Colby Hill and not Hills.
Yeah, Ramsey County has it as Hills. We had to do some research on that too.
Really?
Yeah, so.
Plural?
Yep. So I don't know when that changed or what that process looked like, but.
Well, and the reason it's important is the person we're talking about, her family has lived there forever. And her family was part of the neighborhood that built it.
Okay.
It wasn't the city. It was the neighborhood that made this community center and named it Colby Hill. And so that's why it's important. But down the road, is it important? I don't think so, but.
Right.
Yeah.
However, if there is documentation for that, it would be helpful to have myself or Sue provide that documentation from the county. So they're aware that the county does recognize this as Colby Hills and not Colby Hill. Therefore.
I can do that.
I can send that to you. I know we mentioned it to her on the phone. She's called us a bunch of times too. But I can also send you both the documentation too, so you can see that and have it if you need it.
Do add the whole team.
The whole team. Perfect. I can do that.
Thank you.
Whereabouts is that park? I'm trying to find it. The county's.
Right off of B, or excuse me, right off of South and between Jennifer and Seventh. Or Seventh, is it Seventh Avenue up?
Yeah.
That's the one with the steep hill, but also the, there's like a pavilion there.
It's a really big pavilion and then an open lot across the street.
And a playground, new playground.
It's my neighborhood, it's my neighborhood park, yeah.
Anything else for Brandy?
Yeah.
I just want to take a minute and thank you for putting all of this together. A lot of people would have been like, I'm leaving. I'm not doing this. So I appreciate your personal integrity around this and the information that you're giving us so that we can move forward with as much information as possible because we have been left in the lurch previously and had to rebuild completely. And it took us literal years to do. So thank you for doing this.
Well, you're very welcome. I, I wouldn't feel right about, about that. And I really want to look and see if this Colby Hills, if I could find the plat, the historic plat.
And just seconding off of what Laura says, the document's really beautiful. It's really well laid out, easy to understand. And I know for those of us who've been on this council through COVID, have gone in circles on this park document. So being able to put a stamp on it and feel good about it, at least in the right directions, is promising.
And I, it's my understanding and belief that what you have in here didn't throw the baby out with the bathwater. It was just building upon and providing direction in terms of policy and how, how to move forward and not specific park recommendations. So those park recommendations that were outlined in your 2022 plan, they're still in here. But I think it's up to you as you consider your, your new priorities based on public outreach and your, your council budget and your annual CIP process. You can then reevaluate every year what you think is, is important to fund.
Okay.
So touching on this plan, I've been mentioned by some council members, brought to my attention that this specifically has now been proposed to council, brought to council, described. Now that this is completed by Brandy, do you feel comfortable coming to council and doing a presentation in regards to this park plan? Well, we're planning on being there for the May, the first May meeting.
Yeah, the first May meeting, yeah.
Sarah and I are presenting to talk about the, the next topic, which is our, what is it called? Our development?
I'm calling it the, well, what is it in the agenda?
It's the.
Planning services, planning design services.
Yeah.
Park planning and design services.
So we're coming to council to talk about who we chose for park, or who we would like to choose for park planning. So we could talk about this at the same time. I don't know. I think this is going to mean these separate.
A meeting, two different agenda items, I think is what they mean.
Okay. It also, I also want to be very clear and upfront and say that I am not sure I would be able to adequately defend the plan at this time. So if that's something that you feel like we would need to be prepared to do, then we would probably need more time. I would say don't bring it to the meeting. Hold on. I would say we can take that. Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a motion by next meeting, we look over this entire document and say that this is what we really want to do. That would give us ample time for each one of us to look over this plan, the master plan. And if we agree with it, we should move forward. So we can present it to city council.
Sarah.
I would like to make a motion by next meeting, we make a motion to accept or decline the master plan.
I don't know if that would be a motion, but I think you could request that all of us come prepared at the next meeting to read it.
We'll put it on the agenda. Yep. Sarah? Yep. So everybody's got homework. Anything else for Brandy on that? Thanks, Brandy.
You're welcome.
All right, B. Sarah?
All right. Well, you heard my first spiel. But Laura, Dave and I, as well as Brandy and Sarah, have been working kind of offline to work through all the proposals that the city got for basically a business and design partner to work through all the potential plans for McKnight Fields, as well as the Pocket Park and downtown green space that we have. There was an overwhelming amount of, was it, I think, 12 or 16 companies came in with a bid. They ranged anywhere from $23,000 to $110,000 for that first phase. And so we went through all the proposals. We narrowed it down to three. We had interviews with them last week, the top three companies. And we really came across with a clear winner. So the company HDA, which is, I have some notes on them just to give you a heads up, but they were the ones, I believe they did Theodore Wirth, right?
Yeah, if you're familiar with the Trailhead Building at Theodore Wirth Park, the ski lodge, that, they did that park design. And they've done other local, local designs as well that are both, well, they're like spectacular. They're beautiful, but they're also really functional. So they seem to strike a really good balance of those two.
As part of what comes in this phase one is taking a look at all three properties that we gave them and then kind of laying out a thought and plan for what this could be around, starting with kicking off consumer research. So getting into the community, understanding and asking people, what would you like to see in those spaces? We really liked their holistic approach that was really inclusive to not just people online or people, you know, that typically answer to surveys. This was a really thoughtful approach of getting in and getting to people who may not even always be able to answer those surveys. We were really excited. They had a North St. Paul connection. And one of the main principals lives in Oakdale and grew up in this area and knew all about our snowman and about the potential that these areas could bring. So that really kind of drove it home for us. They also kind of landed smack in the middle of price, so they weren't the cheapest option we had. We did vet out that option and we just felt like that group was going to give us sidewalks and benches. And we just weren't, we just weren't terribly excited about that bringing the potential for what, what we have to offer. So we would like to go to council at the first meeting in May and propose this so that we can get moving. That being said, if council approves this, we can go, that company can get started, like ground running and start hitting that research this summer, potentially using the car show, ball games, things that are going to be used, utilized this summer to kind of get feedback so that we can potentially even not waste time and waste three years to do this. We could maybe even start some phase of development next summer, 2025. So that being said, Dave or Laura, do you want to add anything to this?
No, I think there were, at the top, the last three that we did interview, they really stuck out. I mean, some of their projects they've done in the past were pretty spectacular and they're willing to kind of cater to our needs. And I feel with the way they want to do the research to check with the community, I'm all for this, this company. So they also have my recommendation. And if you need, I'll be with, with you at city council at that meeting. So.
I would also like to, and this is maybe a little brazen, but I'm not scared because I've been saying it since I started on this commission a million years ago. But I'd actually like to bring in front of council the opportunity to maybe acquire a different space within downtown. Seeing what this company can do with a small amount of space is really spectacular. Being able to bring something iconic, idealistic, something that can represent our community, can bring entertainment to downtown for families and other people who could utilize that space as we get more and more people moving down here. Right now, the spaces we've given this company to work are very small. And I'm, I'm hopeful that they can do a lot with that small amount of space. However, I think when we show you some of the stuff that they can do, the idea that just a little bit more space to procure something like this could be even more impactful to downtown. And if we're going to spend $60,000 to have them write a plan, I want to make sure they're doing it on the right space, getting the right information out there. So that being said, if you don't mind, Cassidy, I wouldn't mind just putting it in front of the council to just rethink about the space next to Sidewinders or even some of the other spaces that have been brought up in the past as city-owned land, that would we be able to acquire a little bit more space to do something that could be a little bit more, could give us a little bit more impact to do something?
I'm comfortable with it. I, just for clarity, we, that space in between Sidewinders, that's open. I mean, we discussed all kinds of different options and we discussed, believe it would be a, I'm trying to recite from that. I apologize for putting Blacktop down. There was going to be green space potentially. So I don't think it hurts to mention it, but I also think that upon having the council, the council plan, and the council shows.
Yeah.
Have a good relationship with the local.
Yeah, I just, I think that it's amazing to see what they can do with that small space down by the VFW. But it's A, at the end of downtown, which is hard. It's a small space. It's stacked right on top of people who are living there. So we love this company because seeing what they could do in natural scape to actually prevent some of the noise or whatever would come from that. But we're just thinking if there's something more in the heart of downtown, how much more, how much more this company could do. And I just hate for them, we're going to pay them to use little pocket parks. I'd hate for them to go back and rethink that, whether, you know, if we sign them up for it, maybe they could idolize that space, you know, as we talk about it.
Would that potentially change a contract that they have drafted?
I don't, I don't think it would change it substantially because first, we don't have a contract yet. Okay. And I believe the downtown space, what they have proposed would probably be the same in terms of their scope of work. So, but if, but if they are going to change, getting it done now, as opposed to when they start the project, is going to be.
Yeah, I mean, the first stage is going to be that feedback, which will probably impact no matter what space we have, which I feel okay about, but it'd be the building phase, obviously, which is still a ways away.
And there's some consideration around that spot we have to, I don't know. Tattoo parlor, the right, you have a bar right there. It's just, there's some elements.
Yeah.
This is all community. When you reach out to the community about it.
Yeah. Well, even if there's a bar and a tattoo shop, a little amphitheater or band shell could fit in perfectly there and maybe a play space by the VFW. I mean, the more spaces were given, I don't want to say more spaces, but the right spaces that are given to utilize the community region now, there's, I still think, regardless of what's there now, that tattoo parlor may not be there in 50 years, but our park could be. So I think that's what we have to think about.
Well, right now, the biggest focus is selling humble, that because of the context of, very much when it comes to, they're not the cheapest, they're not the highest, depending why, why you are paying not the cheapest, right?
Right.
And show them the quality of work that these individuals can do right to get this here to work, like the.
Could I jump in here on the pricing? So the, the consultants all provided sort of two tiers of pricing. So the first would be for this plan that they're proposing to do now. And this company is right on budget as far as what we have included in our CIP. And phase two, it's very hard for all of them to, the way I worded the RFP, it was difficult for the consultants to know how to quantify what phase two would cost. It's hard to say what it's going to cost when you don't know what you're building. And so what it came down to, and I had some follow-up with each of the, of the firms to give me a percent cost of construction for the design. And I guess that's an industry standard. And they ranged from, I think, six and a half to maybe 11% construction cost. And then we ran the numbers to figure out, well, if we had a $500,000 project, what is the overall cost to the city going to be? And so we were able to figure that out. This company was on the lower end, so they were seven and a half, not dead last. But I think overall price. I think overall price value, this is a company that I think is going to be probably one of the better ones.
I do, I do want to say, too, that like, we all know that a company can propose to us what they think, ultimately, they can give us, but one of the biggest reasons that we picked them is because of their amazing attention to detail in their community engagement strategy, and really taking the time to make sure that they're hearing everyone's voices in the community, and taking that and figuring out what would best serve them. And we all agree that there should be a downtown park, and I think as we go through that process with the company that is so strongly dedicated to this community engagement strategy and data collection strategy, that that information will ultimately inform us what will best serve us. And really, what our goal here is, is bringing to council a company that we would trust with this process, and we believe in this process, and that we vetted, and then once council approves that, that's ultimately you all saying, we trust your vision, we trust their vision, now we just need to listen. And that may be, we need a big park downtown, that may be something we haven't even thought of. But they really seem to be experts and creative problem solvers, and so I think getting this in front of council is our first step, and then kind of trusting the process going forward is, is where we need to aim our efforts right now.
I don't disagree. I think it's great, and there's a reason why you're all interested.
Yep.
Well, what I also liked about this company is some of the stuff they, we're looking at how we could improve and enhance McKnight Fields, changing some of that stuff over, not maybe, once they look at the community surveys, but it may not be where they have everything just for sports. We may look at putting some different playgrounds or something like that, like where the tennis courts are, or putting some rectangular fields in there for like soccer and stuff like that. So is the fact that they could say, well, it's not just for this, we could find ways to utilize that, so we're not just catering to a small group of citizens, where we're bringing in so people of all ages would be able to enjoy the, the area. So that's, that was one of my things that sold me on that.
Yes, and again, all of that information would be coming from community members and all of our different users. So again, the firm is an expert in their field, and they help us become an expert in our community and what they want, and it's just our job to listen after we get the plan approved so we can actually move forward and do something.
What was the name of the contractor again?
HGA.
HGA, thanks.
And their entire presentation is in our packet, and I know it can be a little daunting to look at, it's very wordy, but they have some great highlights, and it's actually like really good content to read, so it would be worth the 15 minutes to read it.
Anything else? Sarah? Laura?
So included in your packet is a recommendation or a resolution to recommend approval of this consultant to, to city council, so if you wanted to make, take motions on that resolution?
So I would like to make a proposal to recommend HGA as the.
Park Planning and Design Services Firm?
Park Planning and Design Services Firm for future parks projects?
For the three, do we have to specifically?
No, there, there's a resolution in your packet, so just recommending HGA for council approval.
Yeah, we recommend, we recommend HGA for resolution.
You guys should be making a motion.
Yeah.
So you, to approve, or to?
Like to make a motion to approve, recommending approval of a contract with HGA to complete Park Planning and Design Services.
Second.
I'll second.
Dave seconds. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Boom. All right, on to park cleanup discussion.
Yes, I added this because watching the last meeting, there was some talk here about if we wanted to do, bring back a park cleanup that Dave said had happened in the past, so, and it wanted to be added to this meeting, so if there's a discussion that wants to be had, if we want to talk about having a park cleanup day this year, or if we want to maybe work out a plan to start that next year, kind of what that might look like.
Well, I'd like to see us make a plan for next year. Usually what we used to do is have park cleanup right around Earth Day, so like this last weekend would have been park cleanup. There were a few citizens out in Southwood doing some cleanup and stuff just recently, so it's not like it's died, but people are just doing it on their own. But I think we get it out there so they, people know, hey, just come on out and pick up a little bit of trash, might take five minutes, might take five hours, our parks are pretty clean, so. But to get it so we get the, the community involved, and that way we tie, always tie it in with Earth Day, so my proposal would be to add it to our agenda, so it's an event happening right around Earth Day in the future.
I agree.
We'll have to get with North High School because there was the track coach, but I, I've been told Mr. Wallert is retiring, so we're going to have to follow up, and I can do that, too, come next spring, see if they want to, if they're going to continue to do this with the, the track field, track and field team.
I have. Here are my favorite schools of the town, too.
Huh?
St. Peter.
Oh, yep. Thank you, yep.
And Marx, there's a few of them, there's a few of the churches in the past that helped us with buckthorn poles and stuff like that, so, but I think rather than just tying it to the high school, because when we first had park cleanups, so now I'm talking 15 years ago, when I, maybe 16, when I was first a park commissioner, we used to do that all the time, and then the high school kind of took it on themselves, remember? The last couple of years that I was a park commissioner, so that'd be about 10 years ago, they, their group then would pick like six parks themselves, the different athletic groups through the track and field would come out and start cleaning up, because they, they run through a lot of our parks for their training, so they were more than willing to help. And they kind of kept their area kind of like a, their own entity, so the students could come back to North High afterwards, and they would have hot dogs or something like that, whereas some of the other parks, depending on what the cleanup tasks were, there was one, for instance, at Southwood, one of the master naturists would have pizzas that he would purchase for a big group that were doing like a buckthorn or something like that, so. But like I said, I'd like to make a motion that we get this back on the, the agenda so it's on a schedule for future generations to contribute to park cleanup, and tie it into Earth Day.
We can bring it back up next spring, and then make sure it gets on the agenda.
I can make a note to have it on the January agenda, that way we can get a good head start?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that. That's all I had for that.
You do put that as a part of your event for next year?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, so you're going to need to know before January, right?
Yeah, you don't want to plan in January.
No.
You don't want to put it up.
Okay.
For next year's events.
Yes.
July usually, or when do we talk about budget?
It's pretty soon.
Soon, yeah.
June is finalization.
Okay, then we got to get, can we get on the agenda for next month?
Yep.
Great.
Wait, can I clarify something?
Sure.
Why do we need it on the agenda? Can't we just say right now that we want it added to the parks?
That's, my motion was, no, I seconded, but.
Get a motion.
No, we don't, I don't think we need to motion it. Can we just all agree that we would like to put park cleanup on the weekend of Earth Day on the next calendar's event?
Yeah, we don't have to go to city council, do we?
No.
No.
Dave, you all okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
There'll just be some logistic planning on it, that's it.
So let's just look at dates really quick, fast forward a year in the future. It looks like the weekend before Earth Day would be April 19th and 20th. Is that Easter? Easter's, when is Easter?
Easter's at the end of March.
No, it's four, I thought it was on 4/20. I'm almost positive, I'm pretty sure it's April 20th.
And we always used to have it on a Saturday.
And Southwood does their own thing.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
So.
We're going to have to touch base with that, too.
Hold on.
I talked to Darryl a little bit.
So that's Easter weekend, the 20th and 21st, or the 19th and 20th. So we want to go the weekend after.
Weekend after.
Which would be the 26th and 27th, so the Saturday, you said, so the April 26th of 20.
25.
25.
Already.
Oh, to clarify, we do want a calendar for 2025 events at the next meeting. Do you want me to put that together, at least a template to look at?
Yeah, because I think that was part of the thing last year, right? We need at least discuss budget, because we didn't have enough, we thought, for Autumn Arts Festival.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I can do that, I can put together.
Yes, and so we'll just proactively have this on there, so we don't have to discuss it again.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Because then we'll have time to get it to city council, right?
Yeah, I remember the, Sarah, she'll put something out, I, we could go back and look at videos, last, last year's meetings, but I want to say it was like mid-summer that we had told all the event dates, and then hard to work with.
Autumn Arts.
Culture for the Autumn Art Festival.
Yes.
And that budget. And again, we had to plan, we had already, you guys had already planned that last year, and they were already talking about, what are we going to do for 2024? I remember we, and you're like, hold on. Were you at 2024 right now? And that was early, I want to say, April, May?
Yeah, it was too early to get more budget.
That was the meeting that went off the rails, epically, if you remember.
Yes, so that's why we needed to get that done sooner than later, to get a budget proposal, so, yes.
So we're going to want to talk that next.
In the, in the May meeting, yeah.
May meeting, yep.
And it should be 95% done, because we've all kind of agreed that we're, well, we weren't going to add new stuff because there was going to be the position that was managing events.
Yes.
But there, can you clarify with Ryan, who is now going to be doing that?
Yes, from my preliminary discussions with him, it will be that person again, is his understanding. In the interim, I'm kind of helping with that, but I think the goal is to have the new person, but I will for sure clarify and get back to us.
Who was doing music in the park? Ingrid was, yeah.
Yes.
And then Carrie was going to do it.
Yep.
But Carrie has already planned it.
She did plan it, they're all booked.
Yep, so we're okay.
We're good this year.
Perfect.
So maybe.
Volunteer coordination is probably not handled, though, so we should keep that in mind.
That is true.
When you bring, when you bring next year's calendar in front of us next meeting, can you also bring this year's calendar?
Yes.
So that we can relook at the events to make sure that they're on track?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can do that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, me and we're talking budgets, it's Cassidy, right? Would you look into this matter that John brought up earlier?
Yeah.
Let's, can we bring that up in the reports so we can stay on agenda track?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, well, if this would be part of our budget, that would be great, so.
I'm going to run through each so you can just shoot it out that time. Public Works update.
Yep, so I included this in your packet per your request from the last meeting, so I have the updates from Public Works from March and April, you can see them in there. Pretty standard things, it looks like they got the tennis courts all set up, batting cages, all the ball fields are set up and running, everybody's using them, which is wonderful. And then they finally finished their irrigation system around Casey Lake, around the, around the building there, so now they're going to go through with landscaping and make sure they can get the grading back to where it should be and make it smoother. So, yeah, everything's moving forward, and then later this month, they're going to have their summer help start, so we'll start seeing them out in the parks.
All right.
Sarah, have they put up the volleyball around town?
I do not know that, but I can get clarification on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Request for ones to put back.
Casey Lake, okay.
Where are we at with Howsey? Is that going to be a different monster?
Howsey had their pre-construction meeting last Thursday, so construction is going to be occurring soon. I think it's slated to be done in June. I have the pre-construction schedule, I think, on my desk, so if you want to report back to them, maybe in an email.
Perfect, perfect. All right, anything else on Public Works?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay, reports from commissioners, I'll start with Cassidy, then I'm going to go around to each of the members. Do you have anything?
No, not right now.
Nothing?
You're calling me.
Huh? Well, now we're changing it. Ben, anything?
Nope.
Sarah?
Nothing new?
Nope.
Okay, Laura?
We haven't made any movement on it, but we haven't forgotten about the community gardens and the want for them in the city, so I just want to make sure that whoever is watching hears me say, we still have that on our radar, we just have a couple of other things we have to move forward first.
I'd just like to thank Brandy for all of your hard work and dedication to this commission, and we wish you well.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
You're welcome. Sue?
Nothing.
David? Go for it.
They did a burn over at Southwood Nature Preserve, which they did quite a few little spot areas, which right now, with the last little bit of rain we had, that's just popping. Public Works also was able to get some of the trails chipped, and with the warm weather lately, I've never seen the park more active, it's, and you've probably seen it on your end.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of people using it, so I want to thank Public Works for all the work that they have done over there, and the fire department for getting that control burn. It was a really windy day, I was kind of a little concerned, but they, they had it completely under control, and it was a great job. And the other park, which was Northwood, that, everything there looks fine.
Okay. Did we notify the neighbors in the area about the burn?
No.
Might we want to in the future?
The city did, yes.
The city did?
There was something on the website.
There was something on the website, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good enough for me. All right, Sarah, Brandy, anything else?
Not for me.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
David makes motion second.
A second.
Sue seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.